Missed one. Sorry about that. Thanks, folks, for coming to order quickly here. We've only got about 36 minutes before the Bruins start, so bill dissolve at 8 o'clock so we can get home, okay? Sorry, just kidding. Good evening. My name is Dan Bruce, town moderator. Welcome to the Walpole 2024 Spring Annual Town Meeting. There being a quorum of over 76 members being present, please come to order, which you've all done. Does the clerk attest to the return of the warrant? She does. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, under God, indivisible, infinite, and everlasting.
First, I want to discount, we have two new RTM members that were elected by caucus this evening. Elizabeth Chase for Precinct 3. Elizabeth, please stand up. Come on, Elizabeth, there you go. And in Precinct 6, Lucy McNamara. Lucy? Thank you. We have one new department head that has joined us since our last meeting, the Veteran Service Officer, Ian Rogers. Mr. Rogers? Thank you. Next, to my left is Town Council Attorney Lauren Goldberg, Town Administrator Jim Johnson, and Chair of the Select Board, Ally Hamilton. And down in front of the stage is the Finance Committee Chair, Denny Crowley, and Vice Chair Doug Shea. Unfortunately, folks, I got to call this out. Representative Congressman Lynch couldn't make it this evening due to his schedule, excuse me. Congressman Lynch has been very stalwart supporting the town of Walpole, and I just want to just make a, say a word in his favor while he's not here tonight here. He is here religiously. He supports us religiously, and I think that bears some, you know, it gets me, folks. I appreciate him coming to see us out here. So, town meeting doesn't happen without the efforts of many, many people, short and sweet. Thanks to each and every one of you. You all know who you are, and I want to thank you for all your support. Now onto the procedural rules. If you decide you'd like to make a comment, please queue up in front of the front row near one of the microphones. You know, we've got them on both sides here. Please use these stage here. Don't mill around them. Please sit. I do take an order when you come up to see who's gotten there next or first. When you are recognized to speak, please identify yourself by name and precinct, even if I call you by name. Address your remarks to the moderator. If you are asking a question, I will ask the appropriate official for a response. As has become our practice, all members who wish to speak on an article will be limited to three minutes. I ask that there be no repeat speakers unless you have new information to offer. If a member is seeking additional time, they may ask the moderator, who will pose the question, to the members. Since we've put this in place, I don't think anybody's ever been denied extra time. So don't hesitate to ask, but also respect your fellow members' opportunity to speak as well. Voice voting will be the primary method of voting. We'll be using the green and red voting cards during voice voting. You should have received the cards when checking in. Per usual, if I'm unable to call a voice vote, we'll go to a standing vote. We have six tellers for our standing votes. On my left, Harry Mercedes and Wayne Lessin. Thank you, guys. In the center, Pat Hinton and Mike McGrath. And to my right, Bill Buckley and Bob Buckley. If there is a standing vote, I will first count the tellers' votes by show of hands. The tellers will count the standing vote, the ayes first, and then the noes. The tellers shall coordinate their counts amongst them and then announce from the microphone. The town clerk and I will then independently tally the votes to determine whether the quantum of vote has been met. Before I move on, I just want to do one thing because I've seen a lot of new, the town clerk and I have seen a lot of new faces, and we haven't had an election since. So if you are not an elected RTM member, you must sit in the middle break with the aisle in there. So if there's anybody on either side, center or left, and that is not an elected RTM member, you got to move to the middle, okay? Great, everybody got that message beforehand. Super. Now, as many of you know, I am not seeking reelection, so you will have a new moderator for the Fall Annual Town Meeting. It has been an honor and a privilege for me to serve as the moderator for the town Walpole for the past seven years. And that's all I'm going to say. Keeping it short. Thank you. Come on, stand up. Come on. As has been the case, I assure you this town meeting will be run efficiently and fairly as possible. As you know, I have no vote that would influence the outcome of any particular article. Questions or comments? Okay, there being none, please rise and remain standing, and I will read each resolution and then pause for a moment of silence and then read the next. There are four. Resolve that we, the representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 6, 2024, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Ron Fusile, who passed away on October 20, 2023, as the town clerk for the town of Walpole from 1995 to 2015, as member of the Permanent Building Committee from 1981 to 1995, and as representative town meeting member from Precinct 5 from 1975 to 1994. And further, an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request that the moderator observe a moment of silence in Ron's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Ronald's family. Resolve that we, representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 6, 2024, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Mary Dougdale, who passed away on February 15, 2024, as a member of the Council on Aging from 2012 to 2015, and as a representative town meeting member in Precinct 1 from 1998 to 2007. And further, an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request that the moderator observe a moment of silence in Mary's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Mary's family. Resolve that we, representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 6, 2024, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late John Norwell, who passed away on February 17, 2024, and as a representative town meeting member in Precinct 7 in 1971. And further, an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in John's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to John's family. Resolve that we, representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 6, 2024, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Anne E. LaSalle, who passed away on April 15, 2024, and as a representative town meeting member in Precinct 4 from 1989 to 1997. And further, an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Ann's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Ann's family. You may be seated. At this point in time, I have a preliminary motion and second from the Finance Committee to waive the reading of the warrant. Questions or comments? There being none, the Finance Committee's motion requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
If I could interrupt you for one second.
Sure.
I'd like to ask Denny Crowley and Ally Hamilton to come up to the stage to present you with our certificate of our appreciation for your service as the town moderator. I've asked Ally and Denny to present this to Dan because they served with him on the Finance Committee. Seems like a long time ago, Dan. They had the mic taken picture.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Bill, we'll take that motion now? Thank you all. Thank you very much. I have another properly seconded motion that all motions of the Finance Committee are the main motion. Questions or comments? There being none, this also requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote. We will now proceed to Article 1, a general article that remains open throughout town meeting. In Article 1, it is moved that the town will hear and act on the report of any committee or to choose any committee the town think proper and transact any other business that may legally come before the town. Are there any? I've had no advance notice of any. Anyone have a report of a committee that didn't reach out to me in advance? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, our rules provide for the moderator to make use of a consent agenda comprised of articles which would generate no apparent controversy and could be properly voted on one unit without debate. The consent agenda with the article numbers and Finance Committee vote listed was emailed to you. Well, it's actually been posted on the town website this week. I will read the article numbers and a brief description now. If any member objects to the inclusion of any article in the consent agenda, that article will be removed and acted upon separately in its normal course of the warrant. Article 4, the fiscal year 2024 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund appropriation. The Finance Committee vote was no action 900. Article 7, the Snow and Ice Budget. Finance Committee vote, no action 900. Article 8, prior year unpaid bills. Finance Committee vote was no action 1200. Article 9, the Walpole Media Budget. Finance Committee vote was favorable action 1200. Article 11, the Warrant Booklet Distribution Change. Finance Committee vote was favorable action 1110. Mr. Damish? And there was a second person, Mr. O'Leary. Was there a third? I thought I thought a third. Okay. Ms. Khatib? And... Okay. Yep. And I'll try my other glasses. No, I got you, Grace. Thank you, Sue. Sorry. I got a new prescription. Oh, no, I don't, do I? All right, so we're going to pull Article 11 out. Let me just do that right now so I don't forget. Okay, and the final article in the consent agenda was Article 14, the Quiet Zone. Finance Committee vote, refer back to petitioner 1000. Okay, so just to recap, with the removal of Article 11, we have Article 4, Article 7, Article 8, Article 9, and Article 14. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. It is a unanimous vote. I declare a unanimous vote. How's that? Okay, we are now on to Article 4, the fiscal year 2024 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund appropriation. Excuse me, that is the wrong article. That was on the consent agenda. We are on to Article 2. Article 2, the fiscal year 2024 budget adjustment. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town transfer the sum of $1 million from free cash to the following account, Walpole High School repairs. This is a petition of the Select Board. Mr. Crowley, the Finance Committee vote?
The Finance Committee voted 1000.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Ms. Hamilton, Select Board?
Select Board vote 500, favorable action.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. And Mr. Forsberg, capital budget vote on this? No? Thank you. Are there any questions or comments with regard to Article 2? There being none, this motion requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. I declare a unanimous vote. Article 3, the fiscal year 2025 budget is regularly moved and seconded that the town accept the proposed budget as presented, which totals $119,731,018. And furthermore, that the Finance Committee recommend that the town meeting vote that the town fix the salary and compensation for elected officials of the town as provided for by the General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, for the services for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024. Approve the new salary schedule as on file in the office of the town clerk, and that the town vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the municipal and school departments and incidental expenses of the town for the fiscal year 2025, July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025, and that the sum of the $119,731,018 be raised from the following funding sources. Raise and appropriate from taxation, ambulance fund, $1,040,000, sale of cemetery lots, $15,000, water enterprise fund, $1,393,755, sewer enterprise fund, $547,628, and the overlay fund, $450,000. This is a petition of the Select Board. Mr. Crowley, the Finance Committee vote?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 1000.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Ms. Hamilton, the Select Board vote?
Select Board vote favorable action 500.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. And Mr. Forsberg, no vote, right? Okay, so as I've done in the past, and you have in your booklet, and you know, about a third of the way through, I'm just going to read out the total general government and then the public safety. If you have a hold on any specific section within total general government, please rise, state your name, and let me know which specific budget you want to put a hold on, okay? So total general government, I'll give you a moment to look through. Any holds here? I'm going to move on to public safety. And he holds on public safety. Mr. O'Leary, which department? Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Anyone else? We'll move on to public education. Moving on to public works. Yes, Mr. O'Leary? Anyone else? Moving on to Health and Human Services. Culture and Recreation, $2,177,617. And Debt and Interest, $7,751,984. Assessments and Fringe Benefits, $24,888,723. Yes, Mr. O'Leary? Net metering. Anyone else? Okay, so we have three holds here. Mr. O'Leary, you wanna come down to the microphone, since they're all yours? John O'Leary just loves to have his segment during my meetings. Mr. O'Leary, first one, I think it was the Public Works, right? Snow and Ice? Ah, Inspection Services. Sorry. Public Safety, Inspection Services.
John O'Leary, Precinct Three. My question had to do with the Personal Services line, the amount of the increase. Could someone speak to that, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Sure. So, um, we actually hired a deputy inspector. Um, last year it was budgeted at just about $67,000. This year it's budgeted at 84.8. Uh, we had to up that a bit to remain competitive in the market. We put it out at the lower end, and we weren't able to get anybody who had any real experience, any experience, and, uh, we ended up hiring someone who was very, very competent. We actually lucked out in bringing that person in. That was the increase.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary releases his hold on Inspection Services. Uh, then we go to Public Works, Snow and Ice, which has a budget of $819,500.
Somewhat of a tangential question. Uh, my question is, how much of last year's budget has been transferred to petty cash? Uh, not petty cash, free cash?
What was the question? Transferred to free cash?
How mu- how much of the budget has been transferred to free cash? Or is that done only at June?
That wouldn't have happened.
So that doesn't happen till the end of the fiscal year. It falls to free cash. So I can tell you that, well, the current balance in that account is $499,202,000, $212,000, sorry.
I release a hold.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Releases his hold on Snow and Ice. And then we have net metering under the assessment and fringe benefit, $1,600,000.
To you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, and an explanation for the town meeting as to what net metering is?
Mr. Johnson?
Sure. So this is something we entered into, I think it was back in 2015 or 16. It related to the, the solar agreements that the town meeting approved. One of the agreements, which was a very good agreement in our hands, um, they actually paid the town back a portion of the money. So the auditors a few years ago, you'll notice that, um, we didn't have it in '21 or '22. We were able to take it in as a revenue source without having to budget for the payout. The auditors advised that we, you should budget for the payout on this one. So what actually happens in this one is, we collect 100% of the revenue on the solar, we pay back 72%, and we keep the 20, 27.5%. So, um, that's the way it works, and that's the reason why it's relatively new.
I release my hold.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any other questions or comments with regard to Article Three? There being none. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your green cards and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your red cards and say no. Uh, the motion passes as favorable action. We'll now move to Article Five, the Fiscal Year 2025 Sewer, uh, Water Budget. It is regularly moved and seconded that the following sums be appropriated to the Water Enterprise Fund and expended under the direction of the Department of Public Works. The purpose of operating the Water Department in fiscal year 2025. Personnel expenses, $1,093,373. Expenses, $2,020,215. Debt service, $1,713,257. And that the sum of $4,826,845,000 be raised as follows. User fees, $4,303,107. Miscellaneous receipts and the MWR, um, wait a minute, MW PAT, $523,738,000. This is a petition of the Sewer and Water Commission. Mr. Crowley, the Finance Committee vote?
Finance Committee voted favorable action 900.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Ms. Hamilton, the Select Board vote?
Select Board vote 500, favorable action.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. And Mr. Hassan Jaeger, the Sewer and Water vote?
Four zero.
Favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments with regard to Article Five? There being none. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your green cards and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. I declare a unanimous vote. Article Six, the Fiscal Year 2025 Sewer Budget, is regularly moved and seconded that the following sums be appropriated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund and expended under the direction of the Department of Public Works. The purpose of operating the Sewer Department in fiscal year 2025. Personal expenses, $338,260. Expenses, $5,169,352. Debt service, $77,200. And that the sum of $5,584,812 be raised as follows. User fees, $5,31,122. Miscellaneous receipts, $553,690. This is a petition of the Sewer and Water Commission. Mr. Crowley, the Finance Committee vote?
Finance Committee voted favorable action 900.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Ms. Hamilton, the Select Board vote?
Select Board vote 500, favorable action.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. And Mr. Hassan Jaeger, the Sewer and Water vote?
Sewer and Water was four zero, favorable.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan Jaeger. Any questions or comments with regard to Article Six? There being none. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. I declare a unanimous vote. Article Ten, Solar On Facilities. The solar installations at various Walpole Middle School sites, it is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of a portion or portions of the parcels of land and billion, buildings thereon identified as, uh, the Walpole Middle School Roof and Parking Lot, the SM LaRusso Field Complex Parking Lot, the Walpole Central Fire Station Roof and Parking Lot, Walpole Police Department, the Town Hall Roof and Surrounding Parking Lots, the Walpole High School Roof and Parking Lot, some of which are in the care and custody of the school department for school purposes, or the Water and Sewer Commission for water supply protection purposes, or any other board or officer having custody thereof for purposes of which they are held, to such boards and committees for such purposes, and to the Select Board for the purpose of leasing for solar and/or battery storage purposes, and to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation as may be necessary, and to authorize the Select Board from time to time to lease said parcels and buildings and to grant access, utility, and related easements thereon for the purposes of installation and operation of third-party-owned solar photovoltaic facilities, solar battery, battery storage, and ancillary equipment, and further to authorize the Select Board to negotiate and enter into power purchase agreements for the purchase of energy and/or solar energy credits generated by such facilities, and pursuant to General Law, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-Fifth, "Agreements for payments in lieu of taxes, with all such agreements to be for terms of up to 30 years and on such other terms and conditions as the Select Board deems in the best interest of the town, and further to authorize the Select Board to negotiate and enter into any ancillary contracts and/or take such other actions as the Select Board may deem necessary or convenient to effectuate the purposes of the foregoing agreements." This is-
Mr. Moderator? Can I just clarify one thing?
Yes. I know, I said the Sewer and Water stuff, right? Because that's the part I didn't strike out of my motion, right?
So, just to clarify, the motions that were published on the town website withdrew Jarvis Farm and withdrew the phrase-
Yes.
-Sewer and Water Commission water supply protection purposes.
From the text as well as the chart? Yes. So I just took it out of the chart and didn't take it out of the body. Apologies, folks, on that.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure. You're serious, right? You mean, you mean about the part that's been removed? Okay, so Jarvis Farm Parking Lot was removed in a vote by the Finance Committee, okay, at the request of the Sewer and Water. And I just read, and I, I didn't exclude it from my text, um, or the Water and Sewer Commission for Water Supply Purposes. That should be struck too. The motions, as they are on the town website, are correct. It's my note. Sorry, I was away at a family event this weekend. All clear? Okay. This is a petition of the Select Board. Mr. Crowley, the Finance Committee vote?
So the Finance Committee voted originally 1200, favorable action. After our public hearing, we had a vote to reconsider. Per the changes you just described, and the Finance Committee voted favorable action 1100.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Ms. Hamilton, the Select Board vote?
Select Board vote favorable action 500.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Any other questions or comments with regard to Article Ten? Mr. Damish?
Uh, Damish, Precinct Seven, just, I applaud, I applaud the removal of the Jarvis Farm from Article Ten. I'm, not everybody's for solar power. I, I like to see it on buildings. I don't like to see green spaces being used for solar. I don't like to see trees being cut down. And if I go on a hike, I'd rather not see solar panels. So I, again, I appreciate, I think Sewer and Water and maybe ThinkCom worked something out to have that removed. Just comment.
Thank you, Mr. Damish. Mr. Mercedes?
Harry Mercedes, Precinct Five. Uh, just have a question. I know people, a lot of private residents are getting solar put on their homes now, and it's, it's getting to the point where the solar companies now coming back and telling them, there's already too many on this street. You can't get it now because the utility poles will not, uh, support that. Have we looked into how that's gonna affect us moving forward if we're gonna put all these solar farms? How that will affect the primary residents from obtaining solar farm, solar energy?
Mr. Johnson?
We have not looked into how it's gonna affect each and every residence, no.
Okay.
So there might be also substantial cost associated with this by putting in new transformers throughout the town. I'm just wondering if we've looked into that.
Mr. Johnson, any other comments? No, right? No, Mr. Mercedes?
So that's just a question mark that we have. There will be extensive cost, um, that goes along with all these sites. And I also would suggest that we do not have it up on LaRusso Field. The other ones seem okay to me, but again, like Jarvis Farm, I think LaRusso Field is also more of a nature-type of open space-type of place, and we should leave it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mercedes. Mr. Hassan Jaeger?
Yes, uh, I'd like to comment, uh, a number of people asked about the Jarvis Farm, and I would just say that, uh, we're gonna have an information session, uh, Thursday, August 16th at 7:30 in the committee room at the library, to go over all the issues of Jarvis Farm, and the water rates that people have been questioning, the MWRA, uh, and the issue of solar, and, and the potential, uh, risks and benefits. So all those issues that are highly detailed, uh, and embedded in this are gonna be addressed by the commissioners on the 16th. If anyone would like to attend, we'd be happy to entertain your questions and provide information on those topics.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan Jaeger.
Evening. Uh, Dan Ellard, RTM, Precinct Eight. Um, I just have a question on the, the overall intention of Walpole in regards to the solar panels. Like, is there a, a long-term plan? I know we're only looking at a couple sites right now, but is the long-term goal to have a total number of panels in town, a total area covered? I know a lot of these are forward-thinking projects, um, we're voting on this group today, um, and the transfer of care and custody. So each time we come back for a town meeting, whether it be everyone or every couple, is there gonna be like a set that we vote on? Is there gonna be, do we have to finish the ones that we're looking at first? Is there gonna be a massive list that we kind of address one at a time? I guess it's just, it's vague to me how we plan to proceed down the line with having all these different locations, because eventually we're gonna run into a location where, you know, six of them on the list might be fine, the seventh one, people don't want. So are we gonna vote in sets? Are we gonna vote on each one? It's just vague.
Sure. Mr. Johnson?
To answer that question, uh, about two years ago, the town approved, um, solar for the Johnson Middle School across the street there where the parking lot is, Fisher School and Old Post Road School. Um, on the Select Board's upcoming agenda, we have a contract to award those projects. So we're moving forward with those. School, school committee recently voted to award those projects, so it was a joint vote. With these projects listed here, the two most important ones are the middle school and the high school, because quite frankly, the school business manager's approach being multiply, multiple times talking about his electricity costs. We're looking at ways to offset the electricity costs. So I would, I would say our next two projects, if this vote is approved, would be the middle school and the high school, to really look at those. And then, um, these other few in here were just, we've, we've had a solar company come in. They said, you know, the way the angles that the, the sun hits these particular buildings, um, is advantageous for us. The other buildings that aren't listed, town-owned buildings, really just, um, like the council and aging, that roof doesn't have enough space. So I would say for now, for the immediate three-to-five-year future, we likely won't be coming back, because quite frankly, it takes a long time to negotiate the three contracts that we're set to award in the next couple weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Ellard. Any other questions or comments? Mr. O'Leary?
John O'Leary, Precinct Three. Um, I just wanted a little clarification. Um, I think it's safe to assume you're talking the new middle school, not the old middle school, right? The LaRusso Field Complex, that's the one down across from the prison site? Is that correct?
The former prison site.
Former prison site, okay. On the Town Hall Roof and Surrounding Parking Lots, how much of the parking lots are we talking, are we talking only, immediate adjacent to the building, or?
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Rogers, are you? Um, it's the parking lot in back where, uh, most of the people park. We're not gonna look to place it out front in Town Hall. It's just that immediate parking where a lot of the staff and residents who come in to do their business. Yeah.
And on the high school roof and lot, what portion of the parking are we talking on that one?
Mr. Johnson? The high school parking lot. So that's something- What roof and, what roof and what lot, right?
Well, not necessarily what roof, but how much of the parking lot, or which portions of the parking?
So that's to be determined, to be quite honest with you, because I think if, in the fall, we're coming forward with a proposal, likely coming forward with a proposal, um, to do a renovation to a, to a large portion of this building, and to also reconfigure the parking lot there. So I, we're gonna do the parking lot first, and then we're gonna work with the solar company. If we can come in and do a canopy the way it's reconfigured, great. If we can't do it, we won't do it. Um, I think there'll be some space there. But, um, it's just, the, the request here is just parking lot in general.
So, if I understand, the portion we're talking about is basically the portion from the school towards Plimpton, the main section where the numbered parking is? That would be the section, if it was done?
Potentially that section, and also there's a proposal for the old, I call it the old softball field where kids play during football games. Uh, that's gonna likely become a parking lot. That area could also be. Um, but again, we're not gonna do that anytime soon, because we gotta get this, the work done in this building. So as I said, I think we're three to five years out from that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any other questions or comments on Article Ten? There being none. This motion affects a change to our zoning bylaw, so it does require our two- two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. Folks, excuse me, folks back there, are you RTMs? Then come down over in front of the break. Sorry, I said it the other way before, so please come down in front of the break. In front of the break, yep. I promise they don't bite. Well, I don't know about a couple of them. Okay, that was a two-thirds vote. I declared a two-thirds vote. Sorry for the distraction there, folks. Moving on to Article 11, this is regards to the warrant booklet distribution change. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to amend Section 88-3 of the general bylaws as printed in the warrant. This is a petition of the town clerk. Mr. Crowley, the Finance Committee vote?
Finance Committee voted favorable action 11-1-0.
Ms. Hamilton, the Select Board?
Select Board vote favorable action 5-0-0.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Are there any questions or comments with regards to Article 11? We did have a couple of members take this out, so I don't know if there were questions or comments with regards to it, or did they just want a specific vote on it? And I apologize, this is a petition of the Select Board, the town clerk. Got you on that one, didn't I? Yes?
Hi, Sue Shockett, Precinct 8. I am one of the people that had a hold on this, and I thought long and hard about this one. I hate waste, and I understand the environmental concerns on it, but I actually think that allowing people to receive the warrant in the mail encourages more participation in town government, which I think is super important. As you know, we have often, open spots already in some of the committees, and I think having the paper copy delivered encourages more people to actually look at it. I think an email is easier to delete or not go back to. And I don't know about you, but I myself read, you know, a few pages at a time, come back to it. I have it open on my desk. It's kind of, I think it's important that we at least give people the option to have it delivered to their homes. And I'm wondering if there might be a way to allow people to opt out of paper delivery rather than saying, "We're not going to deliver it." Is that a possibility?
Mr. Crowley, you want to speak to that?
So, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's in the town charter that we have to do the booklets. So the way it's written now, we don't have the option to allow people to opt out. We have to send them out, the way it's written. So the change is to change the charter so that we don't have, it's no longer required. And then the intent, we discussed this at Finance Committee and went back and forth on it, because similar concerns and thoughts. We're a committee that could use more members, so also throw a little plug in there to encourage anyone to volunteer. But we went back and forth on that same topic in conversation, and our decision or recommendation was to allow people to save the $15,000 in printing, the costs in mailing, the waste, everything else, make it available in the library, town hall, but also to allow people to request it, and we will print it and send it to them.
I just don't think people are going to take the extra step. I don't think people, I mean, I know that they have the option, but I think there are a lot of seniors and younger people too, who don't really understand how town government works. And further, I would say, I mean, it might be worth adding a page on the back that shows what the open committee positions are, to really, you know, hope, put it out there as a plug, as an advertisement, to try to encourage more participation.
I put that plug into my memo that went in, and I have not heard one better response, other than from other Finance Committee members. So, and I-
And the town moderator.
I was going to say, yeah. But I don't think the town moderator heard from anyone, so I go back and forth on the same thing, but I will just say my, I chose to vote for favorable action.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for hearing me out. I think I will be voting against this particular one for the reasons mentioned, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shockett. Ms. Khatib?
Hi, Sarah Khatib, Precinct 8. Couple of questions. Can you tell me the current cost to print the booklets?
Mr. Johnson?
$13,500.
And I, and I watched the Finance Committee meeting, and there was some discussion that the town would continue to print some booklets. Do we have an estimate on the cost of those that will be printed?
The game plan is-
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Is to do that internally.
Oh, internally, okay.
Anyone who requests it, it will get printed and mailed to them.
Okay.
From a printer, rather than go to a professional printer and create the booklet.
Okay. So it would just be like a packet, like a stapled packet, kind of? I'm guessing, yeah.
We'll staple it.
You'll staple it? Okay. You know, like Ms. Shockett, I, you know, I don't like waste, and I'm not sure that this booklet does what we want it to do. And so personally, I'd rather, if we are going to stop it, I'd rather invest some money in better communications, better sharing of information about what's in the booklet, instead of just taking it out, because I think it's, you know, probably all of us have looked at it, and I'm sure there's some other people that do, but it's kind of difficult to get through. And so personally, I'd rather, if we're going to stop it, I'd rather invest in better communication and better transparency, and really better outreach to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khatib. Mr. Trudell?
Mark Trudell, Precinct 4, member of the Finance Committee, through you, Mr. Moderator. I've been on the Finance Committee over nine years now, and the booklets go out well in advance of our public hearing. And the largest turnout we've had in the last three years was this past week by three people who asked a combined total of two questions, you know, two articles on two questions, and they were just asking for clarification about what was in the booklet. You know, we promote our public hearings, we engage in our debate so that we're ready to answer people's questions. Nobody turns out. So even though the booklet is going out to everybody, nobody's coming with questions. And it's on the website already. It will be available to all the RTMs as part of your package, because it's valuable information. It's telling you what the Finance Committee did. But to have every citizen, at a cost to the town, to get it and then turn around and maybe not even throw it in a recycle, but it ends up in the trash, and we're paying for excess trash because people don't read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trudell. Ms. Barrows?
May I ask you about a question earlier?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just want to make sure. Liz Barrows, Precinct 1. I'm all for going green. Just have, is it possible to have the cost to send out maybe like a postcard or a one-page document that would have a QR code that people, the residents, could scan to see the full booklet? Because my experience is that the entire population, some of the more elderly citizens in town, might not have email, but most have a smartphone. And I think most are at the point where they can scan a QR code.
Mr. Crowley? Did you want, or Mr. Johnson? I'll let you two figure it out.
So I just had an idea. I asked Town Council.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea, Ms. Barrows.
Yeah.
I just questioned Town Council, could we send that out as part of our, the tax bills? And she said she didn't see any reason why not, but we could kind of piggyback on another mailing or something like that.
Yeah.
Just a little reminder, hey, town meeting's coming up, first Monday night in May. You know, go to the town's website. We currently use the QR codes for our job posting, so that's easy enough.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I would just add, we can't, under the current charter, we have to send the booklets out. So you'd have to vote for this-
Oh, yeah. I-
And then add it to the budget.
I agree.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure everyone understood.
Hi, David Johnson, 6. I'm all against stopping this for a couple of reasons. It's only a couple of times a year that people really have any contact with the town. Hmm, it comes in the mailbox. Expensive. Put it in the recycling box. How do you explain this compared to this? You know? Doesn't make any sense. This looks like a People Magazine. This looks like a cheap Xerox. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. McNamara?
Lucy McNamara, Precinct 6. Two things. One is, I wonder if we can add the senior center as a place to place printed copies of the warrant? Because I think that's a population that really, smartphones are even something that they don't have, in my experience. And computer literacy is not one of the strongest skills in that group. The other thing, and it's been talked about, about communication, sometimes you have to go to non-traditional marketing to get your message across, like PTA meetings, and Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and things. And when I was younger, it was the junior high lectures on how town meetings work that got my parents to town government and to participation. So just an editorial comment.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara. Mr. Johnson, you had a quick comment there?
Just to clarify, the senior center is already currently listed. It's listed in its full name, the Walpole Cooperative Bank South Street Center.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Burke, you're up.
Joseph Burke, Precinct 4, Finance Committee. I'm the one that voted against this. Being a senior myself, and I'm involved at the senior center, there are a lot of people there that do not have access to computers. We have Chromebooks, but not everybody uses them. And it did come up at the meeting, and the decision was made to have it be placed for their access at the town's senior center.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Mr. O'Leary?
John O'Leary, Precinct 3. If I understand correctly, this would modify one of the general bylaws? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Because the current bylaw says that you have, we have to mail them out.
Yes. Mr. Crowley, could you repeat your comment you made earlier?
So, and I think I used the wrong, I said charter, it's the town bylaws, correct? Sorry. So the bylaws say that we have to print and send the booklet. So this would allow the change of the bylaw, and then give us the options on how to send it. We did put in the several locations to make it clear that places where it would be posted. But we can add the QR code and the postcard and all of the other pieces from there.
My thought is, if we need to change the bylaw to do it this way, why don't we just change the bylaw so that, as Ms. Shockett said, we just opt out to not get it?
Because this is what was proposed and put forward. This is what went through the committee. So in that case, an alternative motion should have been put forward ahead of time for this idea, in which we could have discussed it, but this is what we came up with at the time.
So what I might recommend then is we refer this back to committee for future thought, and see if there's an alternative that would work even better than this one.
Attorney Goldberg?
Mr. Moderator, through you. Because the mailing is part of the posting requirement under state law, it really isn't possible to say, "We'll make it available, but not, but people can opt out." As it's written right now, people can opt in to get it mailed to them, and I'm sure the clerk's office will have a list of people that are looking to get it by mail.
Okay. I would recommend, if that is what the decision that we make tonight, we need to publicize this for all those people who aren't attending or who aren't watching us tonight, who expect to get this come fall and suddenly won't get this come fall. So we should need to publicize this in the local papers or something to make all that information available to the town members who aren't here presently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Damish?
Damish, Precinct 7, I was one of the ones who put a hold on this, so I figured I should come up and say something as well. I agree with Sue. I do find the PIMP very helpful. And I think it was Mark who said, no one's, very few people go to the Fincom meetings. I do agree with him on that as well. But I will say this, that in my neighborhood, I do have, neighbors ask me about this when they get it. So I've got people, it's a good reminder to get it in the mail. It's very transparent, and they're always confused. And when I do go, I help explain it, and Jim, I'm very honest, I don't choose sides. I, middle of the road, I just give out the information, what exactly this says. So I stand in keeping it for now, and maybe coming up with a, voting it down tonight, and then maybe someone can come up with an alternative for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Damish. Sir?
Brad Hickey, Precinct 4. $13,500 was the cost that we annually to print this, is that what I heard? Okay. How many copies do we trash because we print extras to keep at town hall and the library and other places? What percentage of the budget, maybe that's a better way to put it?
Off the top of my head, probably between 150 and 400. Sorry, Mr. Moderator, through you.
That's fine.
Okay. And then, we're going to have to pay for postcards if we're going to do that, right? And we're going to have to pay for other, I just don't see, we're talking about saving $10,000 a year? I mean, I know that's real money, but we have 130 million or whatever budget, I think-
119 million, let's be clear.
Okay. Under, I stand corrected. It's a lot of time talking about taking information away from the voters for really no reason. I don't think that's really valid. To Mr. Johnson's point earlier, are we required by law to print that annual town report?
Yes.
We are?
Yes.
And how much money do we spend on that?
$1,623. And the reason why it's so little is because we were not required to mail it out. We posted on our website, we printed 150 copies, and I believe 100. Probably 100, 150 of those copies were brought tonight, so.
We only print them basically for here?
For the most part, and for town offices. I refer to them every couple of years, in case I need to know, what did we vote in 2010, so.
Understood. Overall, I just, we're not talking about a lot of money here, and there are a lot of people who will not receive this. And if you send them a postcard now, that every year, every spring or every fall, you're going to have to opt in or don't look for this, or do this new QR code, it's not going to work. And I think ultimately, we could be spending our time talking about more important things. So I'm a no.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Any further questions or comments on Article 11? There being none, this motion requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. As I thought. Okay, tellers. Tellers, please rise. Actually, let's do this. The, yeah, tellers, please rise. And the tellers, if you could raise your hand if you're in favor? Harry, you raising your hand in favor? Yeah. No, okay, all right. So I have two, two, okay, two, okay. All right. Tellers now on a no vote. Raise your hand, please, or in your red card if you got it in your hand. Okay, thank you. Just the tellers, just the tellers, folks, thank you. Okay. Now, all those in favor, I'm going to ask you, when you stand, just kind of stay seating, don't be wandering around, make it easier for the tellers to kind of vote. So all those in favor, please rise. You do not have to raise your green card. You just have to stand. Yes. Yes, center counts down front. I'm sorry, thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Thirty-three in the middle, Mr. Moderator.
Thirty-three. That's all right, we're gonna vote.
Three, thank you.
Can't tell you.
Are we ready? Not rushing, yeah. All tellers ready? Okay. Good? Rob? Bob?
Fifteen.
Fifteen on the right. Center?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Wayne? Ten. Okay. That was a close one. So, there were sixty-three ayes, excuse me, sixty ayes and sixty-three noes, so the motion does not, the motion does not pass. It fails. It was sixty to sixty-three, the noes had it. And as far as we know, there was one twenty-four was the quorum when we started. So there is at least one abstention, and we saw someone walk in during the count, so that would make one twenty-five, I think. I don't know. But right around there, so, good vote, though. Abstentions don't count in the vote. So. Hmm? We're good. Article twelve. Inclusionary zoning. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws to establish five J inclusionary zoning requirement as printed in the motion included in the town meeting packet. This is a petition of the planning board. Mr. Crowley, the finance committee vote?
Finance committee voted favorable action, ten zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Ms. Hamilton, the select board vote?
Select board vote, five zero zero, favorable action.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. And Mr. O'Leary, the planning board vote?
Planning board voted, five zero zero, favorable action.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any questions or comments with regard to Article twelve? Ms. McCarthy?
Shannon McCarthy, precinct three. I saw that our article is modeled after one that passed in Mansfield, and I was just wondering if anyone would be able to speak to the impact in Mansfield that's been seen, seen so far?
Jim, does anybody speak to Mansfield?
No. Patrick Duchesnes and I worked with this, and I can't specifically, it was recently, so I can't specifically speak to the immediate impact in Mansfield.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. McCarthy. Mr. Hickey?
Brad Hickey, precinct four. I just wanna understand the math here. The way this is written, it's for units of, developments of six units or more. And it says that the sixth unit, and then every seven units thereafter, are required to be designated affordable. Which means, ultimately, unit six, unit thirteen, unit twenty, and on and on we go. Is that accurate? Is that how it would work?
Mr. Johnson, do you have somebody else you want to speak to some of these questions?
Patrick's here, but I can-
Okay.
Just looked at Lauren.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's just, that's, you're counting it correctly, Brad.
Okay. So, under this proposal, then, somebody could build twelve units and only be required to put one affordable unit in?
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Yes.
Well, the way I see it, the whole purpose of these inclusionary zoning bylaws is to help us undercut, you know, fight against all these developments to bring us below the ten percent threshold that we need, and able to, you know, deal with all these forty B developments. So, I don't understand why we're proposing an article that allows people to put less than ten percent affordable units into a development, which would then bring us further away from the threshold, instead of bringing us over the threshold. It stands to me that it's completely contrary to the intention of these, these inclusionary zoning bylaws. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
Dan, if I could just respond to that comment?
Absolutely, Mr. Johnson.
Sorry. I mean, Ally may wanna join me on this one. So, Brad, we're looking, this, this article, inclusionary zoning, came before this body two different times. It failed, it was complicated. I think there was a lot of good intentions there, but it just didn't simply pass. It's, you know, it was established a housing trust, I think, with one or two of them. And this is, we're just trying to keep it simple, get some of the, the, the smaller units that we know are coming into town. I can think of multiple ones. And every time, you know, one is built, we lose track. And, so it's just trying to allow us to keep up. Because once Summer Street project comes on, and once the Gilmore Street project comes on, I believe we'll be at ten point eight four percent. So we're very, very close there, and that's only good until the, the next census, which will probably happen, it'll probably be finished by 2032, and it's gonna creep on us very quickly. It's just more or less a foot in the door. We can expand on this bylaw going forward, or we can edit it. It just allows us to get something started, so. Ally, do you have anything?
I would agree. I think for the select board, it was, we have talked about having a plan for finding ways to have, create more affordable housing, and be able to have these developments have, you know, something, a bite that they, they have to abide to. And I think it's a step in the right direction, and it's the beginning.
If, if I may reply, I, I understand it, and I understand the motivation for it, and it's all good. I mean, somebody who wants to put four or five units in, they don't fall within this. Somebody, a smart developer's gonna say, well, I'm not gonna put more than twelve, and I'll just put one, one unit in. And it, again, it brings us away from the number, so the intention might be that it helps, it actually takes away. I just don't think the math was really thought through very carefully, and I know it's been several attempts here to get this through. It's still not right. So, you know, putting something through that's not right just because it's time, I don't, I don't really see the point. That's-
Mr. Hickey, Mr. Hickey, before you leave, any comments from the planning board? I don't see Mr. Conroy, but Mr. O'Leary, Ms. Beatty, any comments from the planning board on this article for Mr. Hickey? Then, okay. Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Ms. Ryan?
Martha Ryan, precinct three. And I, I appreciate that this is referring back to commission, I mean, to petitioner, rather. But I guess, I'm just, it's not clear to me, are these already existing places that are being built, or are these new developments? And where would they be proposed geographically in town? Or am I way, maybe I'm way off.
Mr. Johnson?
So, this is, just to clarify, this is not to refer back to petitioner. This one was recommended, favorable action.
Oh, well, that's the first point of clarification, then. Okay.
And I can tell you, so, there are some units, particularly, there's one project that is, that I, I don't know if it finished up with the planning board, is currently before the planning board. I know the twenty-one day window is still open. Now, corner of Spring and West Street, people have asked, well, is that gonna be captured here? No. The answer is no, because they actually filed an A and R plan prior to this, this being published in the warrant. So that one, we wouldn't be able to require that. But there is some other projects going on. Specifically, there's ten to twenty units, two or three buildings that are going in where the former Leo's Pizza used to be. That property owner, he plans to build a few other buildings there, and then one building that goes around to West Street. Those will be required to have an affordable housing component in them. I can't think of any others that are off the top of my head, but once, this was basically published, it froze the zoning. However, that, the project at the corner of Spring and West was able to get in prior to that.
Yeah.
Sorry, yes, right near the train station.
The train station. So I guess, I guess my concern is that, how, the impact that this is gonna have on the schools that already have high enrollment, and host different programs for students with significant needs. So, I guess, by bringing in more affordable housing, it's more likely to have more children. No? Again, just point of clarification for me.
Is that, is that a question or a statement?
I guess, well, yeah, more of a statement, I suppose.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Thank you for your-
Just so I can clarify, that's not the case. In, in this particular occasion, we'll use that, what, the-
Was the train station?
Yeah, the train station project.
Spring.
If that was able to get covered under this, they can, they can build that project under our current zoning bylaws, the way it's allowed with the, the parking restrictions that are in there. And the planning board, they were having, they held a site plan review, and a lot of the people said, let's show up, and, you know, make sure this is voted down. This would have allowed us to, to capture, Brad did the math for us, but like, they would have been an affordable housing component as part of that. But now there, there isn't. Now there's just ninety-five more units coming into Walpole, and that's gonna chew away at our ten point eight four percent. So if we put this in, at least we'll be able to capture something, and we continue to build on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Mr. O'Connell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you, Bill O'Connell, precinct four. I, I just had a question regarding the administration. It looks like the planning board is gonna be approving this, and I just noticed in the text that it looks like the planning board has in its discretion, I'm just wondering, is it, is it for a majority? Is it, it looks like they can also switch to an off-site location if a developer wants to change things up? So, just generally, and, and also site plan review, and the approval is part of, it could be part of the approval process. So, it seems like there's a lot of discretion there. I don't know, will it be a majority vote? Is it, is, will, will it conform, comport with the typical planning board requirements? So, you know, those are my concerns, and, and again, it seems like there, you know, there may be some administration that's involved. I know that that was one of the issues before, trying to avoid a trust. So, I don't know if anyone in the planning board can speak to that.
Ms. Beatty?
Katie Turco-Beatty, planning board. I'm not representing the planning board getting up, and I'm not prepared to speak to this, but just to clarify, Weston Spring is still before the planning board. That hasn't been approved yet. And as far as this goes, this article, we were unanimous, but one of the things that came up before us was, if we have a building come up, this is ten percent. However, and Pat Duchesnes can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it, it's been a while since we heard it. But it will not make the entire building count towards our affordable housing quota. Does Pat wanna clarify that? That being said, to what Jim said, we agreed with him. It's a start. It's better than doing nothing. Several projects have come before us. We have asked the applicants if they would be willing to put an affordable component in it, and the answer is always a straight-out no. And we have no power to make them do that. So this is at least a step in the right direction.
Mr. Duchesne?
Three, Mr. Moderator. To answer Ms. Beatty's first question, in terms of the inclusionary housing requirement, the units that are actually affordable would count towards RSHI numbers, but it wouldn't enact the same way as a forty B project would, where if it were an entirely rental project, you could count, obviously you count the twenty-five percent, then you count all units of a project if it's a rental, under a forty B project. There's a distinction between if it's a rental project, or if it's in an ownership project, whether or not you count the, all the units, or just the affordable units.
Hi, Audrey Grace, precinct six, and a member of the finance committee. The, the thing about zoning, that I think we, we talked about a lot in finance committee, is that zoning bylaws do not tell people to develop housing. They don't tell a developer where to build, or that they have to build. It is the town's ability to say, if you do build in our town, here are the requirements for doing so. In this inclusionary zoning bylaw, I think that Patrick Duchesne and the team at the town hall did a fabulous job seeking input from the community, having numerous conversations, and developing a zoning bylaw that is right for Walpole at this time. And I applaud them, and all of their work here, too. So, I stand in favor of this article, and I encourage everyone else to do the same. This will help us make sure that we can have conversations with developers, and it is a, as you've known, you've seen, unanimously sponsored by the planning board, the select board, and the finance committee, which is fun, right? And rare for zoning. So, let's, let's ride that high to the end of tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grace. Mr. O'Leary?
John O'Leary, planning board. To address one of the questions asked before about off-site, take, doing some of these items off-site, part of the wording of the article and the proposed changes, that's only at planning board's discretion to allow anything to be, any of the requirements to be happening off-site. Without the planning board permission, any low-income housing or rehabilitation must be done on the locus of the work being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. All set? Any further questions or comments on Article twelve? There being none? This is a, this motion requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards?
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. I declare a two-thirds vote. Article thirteen, the MBTA Communities Act, multi-family overlay district, is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, section four, establishment of a district, establish a new section sixteen, MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, and amend section fourteen definitions, as printed in the motion included in the town meeting packet. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Crowley, the finance committee vote?
Finance committee voted favorable action, nine one zero.
Ms. Hamilton, the select board vote?
Select board vote, favorable action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. And Mr. O'Leary, the planning board vote?
Planning board voted on two different issues here. The first issue was on approving the layout of the central core and outer core, as shown in the, in your paperwork. The board voted three zero two, three favorable, two abstaining, to accept that- The, the Board voted 302, three favorable, two abstaining, to accept that the, um, area listed for this was acceptable. The Board then voted 212, two favorable, one against, and two abstaining in favor of, as a, in favorable to the article.
So overall favorable 212?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we have a substitute motion, um, presented by Mr. Forsberg, and seconded by Mr. Lee. And the, um, substitute motion, it is moved and seconded that Article 13 be referred back to the Select Board for further study. So that is the motion before us at this time. Mr. Forsberg?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Forsberg, precinct seven, and also a member of the MBTA, uh, Zoning Steering Committee. Uh, first of all, I would, uh, like to thank, um, Patrick Duchesne, uh, for a job well done in guiding the committee, uh, through this process, and I would also like to acknowledge and thank the, uh, Steering Committee. It was a pleasure working alongside them. I feel as though we came up with a very good plan that incorporates all of the state's requirements. Uh, during the process, a couple of goals we had in mind were to protect the abuttes and maintain the character of the town as much as possible, uh, which I think we did. And as a matter of fact, I think the proposed overlay district may be better than the existing underlying bylaw. Next, I would like to make it known that I am sponsoring this, uh, this, uh, substitute motion personally and not as a member of the, uh, Steering Committee. Uh, with that being said, following the public forum at the Senior Center, the public hearing at the Planning Board, and take, talking to a number of people, the consensus is just that, um, just about everyone is not pleased with the state, uh, uh, forcing this bylaw upon us. Matter of fact, if it was such a great bylaw, why did the legislators find it necessary to hold the towns hostage by threatening to cancel grant money, or even require the return of any grant money that was already awarded? I find the state being somewhat contradictory. Section 16, 1C says, I quote, "Creation of housing in Walpole that is permanently available to affordable, uh, low and moderate-income households." While only 10% uh, of these units are required to be, uh, affordable, and that would leave 90% of the units at a market rate, and right now, the market rate for one bedroom around, in this area is close to $3,000, and I really wonder how affordable that is to, uh, most people. Uh, to me, local zoning allows towns their individualism and to maintain their character. As a member of the Planning Board in 2002, and being a member of the master plan back then, at that time, someone had said to me, "The state hates the fact that towns control local zoning." Uh, that statement has stuck with me for a long time, and I just look at the effect that, uh, 40, the 40B law has had on towns, and the recent, uh, law that rescinded the two-thirds, uh, requirement and zoning changes, and now this MBTA Zoning Act, and I wonder what is next that they're going to, uh, throw upon us. This bylaw seems to be targeting the suburbs with, uh, which lack much of the infrastructure to handle these large projects, rather than the cities and towns such as Dedham, which is designated Legacy Place, or Norwood, which is designated Windsor Gardens. And what is the, uh, what are the chances of those being developed into housing? At, at some point, I think we need to stand up and say enough is enough, as most towns do not want any part of this bylaw. Now may be the right time to band together and let our legislators know how we feel. My attention was to table this, uh, the vote on Article 13 tonight, but, uh, Town Council told me that that's not allowed, and it has to be referred back to committee. I do not expect that any, uh, that anything needs to be done with the current proposed plan, as it is a very good plan. I would just like to see the results of any lawsuits against the towns that have resisted the bylaw. The deadline for this article to be approved is December 1st, December 31st, 2024, so I do not see the harm in holding off the vote until we see the outcome of any of these lawsuits. My attention is not to crowd an already anticipated fall town meeting, or to cost the town any grant money. I just want to see the best for the town of Walpole, and not have the state dictating our lo, local zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forsberg. Mr. Duchesne? I'm going to have Mr. Duchesne, uh, actually speak to the article a bit now, and then we'll come back over here. I want to just remind folks, we're going to speak to the amendment, the motion, right? There will be some discussion of the main article in there, but I'm asking you to kind of limit your arguments to the motion, but I don't mind you bringing in the main a little bit. We'll, we'll kind of play it a little bit here, okay? So we'll kind of leave it to you, we'll see where the discussion goes. Mr. Duchesne, to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, I'll be pretty quick, I'm just going to give a ba, a basic understanding of why we're here, kind of a timeline of events, and, and what this is about. So, in 2021, state legislature passed the changes to the State Zoning Act. Of these changes was the creation of section 3A of chapter 40A, which is the bylaw, um, that were, the law that we're talking about. So, section 3A dictates that MBTA communities shall have a zoning district of reasonable size that allows for multifamily housing by right, provided that the zoning shall be without age restrictions, suitable for families, and have a gross density of not less than 15 dwelling units an acre, and be located, uh, not less than a half mile from, and communities applicable transit station. The law also further dictated that guidelines to this new law would be created and, uh, distributed by the Executive Office of Housing in, uh, livable communities, which was DHCD, if anyone's familiar. Uh, those guidelines started as a draft in 2021. The final guidelines were released in August of '22 with some minor revisions of August of '23. During that period, communities were able to submit comments and questions to the state, as well as attend countless engagement sessions, workshops, in both order to learn and address their questions and concerns. So I guess what I'm getting at is, this process started a while ago. Communities were at the table, able to bring initial comments and concerns, and get us to a position of where we are today. Uh, in total, there's 177 communities, uh, in Massachusetts that have been designated an MBT community. It's designated not only communities with a commuter rail station, but those of rapid transit, or those that are adjacent to a commuter rail sta, uh, community. Uh, Walpole is classified as a commuter rail community, so it's an MBTA community, but its designation is commuter rail. Uh, and so, as, as, um, Mr. Forsberg mentioned, our deadline of compliance is this calendar year. So, from the start of 2021, we've been actively attending workshops, learning sessions, we've been submitting questions to the state, and having various, um, meeting various thresholds needed for interim compliance. So that's been one of the core requirements along the way, was providing information in order to be compliant in, on an interim basis. We were also one of the first towns to per, uh, pursue and receive grant funding for outside technical assistance. It's allowed us to do, uh, work with an expert in terms of district modeling and creation of the bylaw. Uh, in the fall of 2023, a Steering Committee was appointed. It's provided us with local guidance for, towards crafting the district and boundary, and the language of the bylaw itself. Um, as Mr. Fors, as we mentioned, too, that I think we felt, we came together with a product that is seamless for where it's located, and, and trying to keep true to the character and location of what is essentially the downtown. So what's before you tonight is a proposed, proposed zoning overlay that not only meets the requirements for compliance, but takes, uh, significant consideration of the surrounding neighborhood, the underlying zoning's existing conditions and characteristics. To further clarify, the law is a zoning mandate only. It's not a construction or production mandate, does not take into account the existing dwelling units that are already within a defined boundary location, and compliance with the law is not measured by, measured by the number of actual units on the ground, either before or after you pass the zoning. It's, it's simply just a change of your laws to allow for that type of production to occur. And as we, we'll probably talk about tonight, in terms of not meeting compliance, certainly there's certain grant funding that is, um, we've become ineligible for, ineligible for, such as MassWorks, Housing Choice, and Local Capital Project Fund. Uh, there's 13 other discretionary programs that are called out within the guidelines themselves, and then there's also language that implicates that, uh, state agencies may also take a community's compliance in consideration for additional discretionary grant permitting. So it is, it is pretty wide in that regard. Uh, but further than that, there is also the risk of, um, uh, essentially, uh, action from the Attorney General's Office in, um, in lawsuit, and also impacting our, uh, federal and state fair housing laws. So, and the government's familiar, a few situations throughout the state, and so that is a real possibility of, of not reaching compliance. I'm happy to answer any questions in general about the law, but, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duchesne. Ms. McNamara?
Lucy McNamara, precinct six. So I looked at this law and actually feel that it does not mandate construction, which means you can have this zoning, but it may not change things. But in my mind, the law is, or the bylaw is a little weak, and that's because the underlying zoning can take precedence over the MBTA zoning. I'm biased, because around the corner from me is proposed on Spring and West Street, a 95-unit apartment building with 193 parking spaces, in an area of 1.87 acres. To look at this in a particular way, 95 West Street, which precedes the, um, train station, generates $640,000-plus in property tax. That's two acres of land, $640,000-plus dollars of income for Walpole. The average home creates $9,700 of property tax a year. Now, if you look per unit at 95 West Street, that's $3,700 of property tax per unit. But remember that the apartment building does not use trash removal, snow removal, highway, um, upgrades and stuff, because it's a private way. They do use the school, though. If you used MP, MBTA zoning, or whatever the proper acronym is, for 95, for 130 West Street, 25 Spring Street, the thing around the corner from me, it would be 56 units of housing. But they're going to use CBD zoning, which can take precedence, and make it 95 units of housing. I think that the MBTA zoning, or whatever the acronym is, is more beneficial to the town. You wouldn't end up with a 95 West Street, which is six stories high, and have a greater possibility that the construction would match the tone and tenor of this town, which is absolutely beautiful. So I'm not against MBTA zoning, I just think the law is weak, or bylaw is weak, and needs to be referred back to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara. Mr. Maffey?
Uh, yeah, Glenn Maffey, precinct one, and a lot of the comments from the, um, speaker before me, so I won't repeat a lot of it. Uh, I was on the committee with Mr. Forsberg, and we studied this thing to, to death, and, and there's really nothing to study further. We found the right place to put this overlay, and as, as you said, um, it's less restrictive than the current zoning. So the developer's going to come in, and more often than not, they're probably going to choose the existing central business district, CBD zoning, and not go with the MBTA zoning. The MBTA zoning is there because it's a requirement, but it actually doesn't let them build as much. Uh, it's really in the same spot as the CBD with slightly, like, some small extensions. Um, and we took a look at the extensions, we made sure that we didn't, uh, allow for excessive building right up against Maple Ave, I think it is. Um, we made sure we had a buffer in there. Um, we really looked at this, we put it in the right place. Um, it's pretty unrestricted. We did put some incentives in to allow for commercial, that's the main difference with the CBD is, uh, is, commercial isn't required under the MBTA zoning, but there's really not that much difference, uh, other than being less restrictive than the existing zoning. So there's really, in my mind, no reason, other than the state's telling us to do it, which isn't ideal. I guess I agree with that, but it's not that big a deal, since it's really not that, it's really not worse than what we have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maffey. Mr. Flowers?
Hi, Andrew Flowers, uh, precinct four. Um, Mr. Moderator, maybe you can have, um, Town Councilor, um, Pat Duchesne, correct me, but my understanding is, if, if the argument for tabling this, or referring it back to committee, rather, is to wait to see how the Attorney General's lawsuit against Milton plays out for the Supreme Judicial Court. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the issue at stake in that, Milton disputes whether there categorizes a rapid transit community, because they have a trolley, and they have higher density requirements under this MBTA Communities Act. And so when they originally passed a zoning plan, and then, um, had a, uh, vote to revoke that, they were non-compliant, and the AG sued them. And so the issue, all this technicality jargon, the point being, they're not disputing the state's constitutional authority to override zoning. Is that correct?
Town Council?
They, they are. They're arguing that the law itself is unconstitutional.
Gotcha. Okay, so they're arguing the law is unconstitutional. Um, okay, thank you. That clarifies a lot. I'm glad I asked that. So, the argument by the petitioner is that we should wait to see if the Supreme Judicial Court somehow throws this out. I, not, as a lawyer, but reading what I can in the Globe and from my attorney friends, I, I'm told that, and maybe others can speak to this, that the Hanover case from the 1970s has, like, largely established that the state does have constitutional authority to override local zoning, and that this Milton case is thought to be fairly frivolous. Um, that's people's point of view, we'll see how it plays out in court. Um, all that, so thank you for the clarifying point. All that aside, even if, um, you disagree with the constitutional authority here, I'm, I'm in favor of the underlying overlay district. I want to just applaud the committee for all their work. I, and I want to say this as someone who's literally in a butter to the district. Literally, the parcel I live on, like, 10 feet, it hits the outer core zoning area. So Glenn, uh, Maffey, the entire committee, I thought did a great job in the presentation. I'm fully supportive of the underlying, um, overlay district, and for the points just raised. But I would just say that to, to hope beyond hope that the Supreme Judicial Court throws out, uh, votes in favor of Milton in this lawsuit that would overturn 50-plus years of precedence, I think is not realistic. And so for those reasons, I would not want to refer this back to committee, and I want to just support it tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Town Council?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear for people that although this case is pending before the Supreme Judicial Court, there's no, um, certainty as to when the case is going to be heard. There's arguments for it to be heard in the fall. Even after it's heard, there's no guarantee that there'll be a decision that would happen before the deadline for compliance, which is December 31st. So I, I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that.
Ms. McCarthy? Thank you, Town Council.
Shannon McCarthy, precinct three. You all heard Mr. Forsberg say, "It's a good plan, possibly better than the existing zoning." This is not a vote about whether or not you agree or disagree with the state's approach. If you do disagree, don't protest by risking our state funding, potentially increasing the burden on our municipal taxpayers. If you disagree with the state's approach, take it up at the ballot box at the next state election. As you've heard from others, this seems to be the best plan for the current framework we've been given. And so for those reasons, I'm going to vote no on the substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy.
Hi, Sue Shockett, precinct eight. Um, I just have a question, I guess, more than anything. So we are voting on the substitute motion, which is just to approve this now, or, or vote on it?
You're, you're voting for or against the substitute motion only at this time?
Correct. So, and, and there's no...
So the substitute motion become the main motion if it's voted favorable?
Got it.
If not, then we move on to the main motion?
So if we delay and vote in the fall on the same issue, our funding at that point, we're not at any, we're still with, within the time period that's allowed by the state, so we're not risking anything by delaying this, is my point. And to Mr. Forsberg's points, I mean, he, he makes some good points. I'm, I'm sort of, uh, interested to see what happens with the Milton case, um, and I think I'd, if there's nothing at risk, am I correct in saying that, but if we delay until the fall?
I, does, is anybody here a risk management specialist?
I mean, it's, it's...
I, I mean, Mr. Johnson, if you'd like to comment?
So I was expecting to be asked the question, well, how much of our grants, our state grants could possibly end jeopardy? So, Jody Kudnay, our finance director, went back and did a, a quick overview of our state grants. So, we received, we have about $6.6 million in pending state grants. Uh, 4.5 of those are about our mass work grants. Um, the state awarded a grant to the town of Milton for like a C-Wall, a few hundred thousand dollars, awarded it, and then when this didn't pass, they went and clawed back that, um, state grant. So who's to say they could come back and try to claw back other things from us? I don't know. Um, I've talked to Town Council, and I said, you know, whatever, if this doesn't get passed, what, what do you think I should bump up the legal budget? How much is this going to probably cost the town? Lauren advised me, could be a few hundred thousand, could be 100,000. So my, if this doesn't pass, I'll probably likely come forward with a proposal at a later town meeting, and ask for an additional probably $200,000 increase in the legal budget. So those are my, Dan said he's not a risk manager. I look at this stuff as, what's the risk involved? I look at this stuff as, what's the risk involved financially for us?
But if we kick it down the road just until the fall, they wouldn't be able to claw anything back from us unless it was...
Let me have Town Council chime in now, too, if it helps.
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to kind of make clear, the EOHLC, which is the entity that reviews the MBTA zoning for compliance with all of the guidelines, which Pat can tell you, there's pages and pages and pages of requirements. We would hope that your zoning will pass that EOHLC review, but there's not a guarantee. And so if we delayed till the fall and the EOHLC said, for whatever reason, then obviously everybody here's done a terrific job, but you never know, you know, what's going to happen in a review process. So that could push you up closer and closer to the deadline. So it, there may not be a way to measure the risk of not moving forward, but I do think there's some risk out there for not moving forward.
And mind you, if it doesn't pass or fails in the fall, then you'll have to try to get a special town meeting in before year end, if possible. You still have that option available as well. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
So we're likely in good shape if we delay until the fall?
That's a statement, Ms. Shockett, right?
That's a statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lawson?
I rise in opposition to the amended motion and in favor of the main motion, and this is why. First of all, I think it's clear, at least I believe it's clear, that the state has overall authority over zoning. We may not like to hear that, but I believe that that is the case. To say that we should postpone and wait and see what happens with all this other litigation, anyone who's familiar with litigation knows that these things take time, and I think it's just pushing, you know, kicking the can down the road. I've, as a member of Finance Committee, taken a good hard look at this, and I think that we did a great job in developing the change in zoning. And I also feel that housing is needed. And so, and it's needed in areas that are adjacent to and close to public transportation. This makes a lot of sense. There's no requirement for anything to be built, and I think there's a lot of confusion over that. This allows developers to build multifamily housing, but there's no requirement to do anything. I think to bury our hands, heads in the sand and just wish that Walpole wouldn't change at all forever and ever is frankly not realistic. So I would urge you to, to not vote for the change in this one article, and I rise in support of the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Ms. Barrows?
Hi, Liz Barrows, Precinct One. Just a couple quick questions. Each town, based upon what they were designated, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, we are December twenty twenty-three. How many towns or communities have already had their deadline to comply with the regulation?
Pat, do you have that?
So the, the rapid transit communities, the number's around twenty-seven, so they had to meet compliance within the end of the fall of two thousand twenty-three. The recent numbers we have, so EH, EOHLC, I say it every time. They've been submitting, sending out through, we have like a planner's list just to kind of give us updates on, you know, how's the MBTA zoning going? Last week, I know we had a count of forty-four towns had passed it and four had disapproved it. So that was of last week. Obviously, a lot of towns have town meeting around this time, so those numbers would likely change following this week or the following week.
Thank you, Mr. Duchene.
So I guess a follow-up question. Of the approximate twenty-three, did any, any communities not propose zoning? Or has it all just been that the four, were they not sufficient by the state guidelines?
Well, one was Milton, we know that. Mr. Duchene, is there any others?
So of the rapid transit communities, only Milton was the one. Actually, Milton did vote in favor of it, but then it was a referendum to bring it back. But other than that, all the rapid transit communities did pass it.
They did pass. And there was no communities that decided to fight the state and, and not submit? That's my question.
So, Town Council?
I'm, Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Did you ask a question?
I, I did, and I wanted to make sure all of the reps understand. I was not making a statement that...
No, 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 I know, I actually just went to Town Council.
Thank you, there were other members of the community.
Yeah, no, I heard some people shouting out. Please don't do that, folks. Well, Town Council?
My understanding is that Arlington, Lexington, and Salem have all been approved by the state. And that's it in terms of who's been approved at this point.
Okay.
But more than forty communities have submitted their...
I guess, let me articulate my question a little better. Of communities that had deadlines, did any community not, not submit any changes to their zoning?
So out of the twenty-three that were due by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, that's what your question is, right?
That's my question.
Have any of those, Mr. Duchene?
Yeah.
None?
And I, well, Mansfield's, I'm sorry, to you, Mr. Moderator, of the, what's, the communities that are designated as a rapid transit. So to kind of break down, there's one hundred and seventy-seven communities that are MBTA communities. From there, there's a breakdown of what a rapid transit communities are, commuter rail, adjacent community, and small town adjacent. So there's four different, I guess, subcategories of an MBTA community. With those come different development guidelines, as well as compliance guidelines. Those first communities that needed to comply at the end of two thousand twenty-three were rapid transit, so we're talking subway access. I could go through Town Council as well, and I'm, other than Milton, which has a different issue going on where it was passed and then brought back with a referendum vote, I don't believe any of those rapid transit communities failed to submit zoning. Whether or not they've been approved yet by DHCD is one thing, but they did submit zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, that answered my question. Nobody chose not. My last question is, now that the zoning threshold for, for changing zoning bylaws is what, simple majority, if I understand, is that an indefinite change that the state has made, or?
Town, Town Council?
There's only certain types of zoning that are going to be a majority vote. One of them is multifamily housing as of right. And those are permanent changes, but other types of zoning are still two-thirds.
Okay. And then this is kind of not about the substitute motion, but it might impact my decision. Did the committee, the steering committee, did they look at the Robbins Road-Johnson Middle School area as being a potential area?
Does somebody from the committee want to, Mr. Duchene, if you know, come on ahead.
I guess to provide a little bit of background. So we looked at a few different locations that are generally within a half mile of Walpole Station. There's some provision in the law where we could look at a certain percentage of the district outside of that half mile. But by and large, focusing on proximity to the transit station within a half mile, that, that was kind of the box we had to work in. There was some discussion on the other side of the rail, which would be in that, that area of the Johnson Middle. But, you know, ultimately, and I'll let anyone from the steering committee speak to this as well, but we figured something that was more based upon where the current zoning already allows for mixed use would be more applicable, would be more fitting into the character of that general area, whereas, you know, the Johnson or that area would be new development entirely.
Thank you, Mr. Duchene.
Thank you. Okay, I promise.
Town Council? Hold on, Town Council's going to comment.
I just want to update. I'm reading on the Mass Municipal Association's website that all twelve of the states designated rapid transit communities did meet the deadline to adopt the local zoning changes. However, Milton undid that decision in February.
Thank you.
Last question, I just want to make sure that...
You said that last time, but go ahead.
I know, I know, but...
So, so folks, the reason I'm saying that, also just to be humorous, but also, she's over her three minutes. Is everybody okay with her continuing? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Continue, Ms. Barrows.
So as had been addressed before, suggesting we wait until the next town meeting, let's say we pass this today, nothing precludes us from making any changes to the bylaw in the future if we don't like it.
Town Council, that's correct.
To comply in a different, in a different fashion.
She's, she's saying there's nothing that precludes us from, if we pass it tonight, there's nothing that precludes us from changing it later, correct? No?
Thank you very much, everyone.
Sure thing. Ms. Higginen. Thank you, Ms. Barrows.
Hi, I rise in opposition to the substitute motion and in favor of the main motion. I think it's really an excellent piece of zoning. We need more housing. Those points have already been made. But I just wanted to add, in addition to incurring some amount of risk if we defer this until the fall, we're also wasting a lot of people's time. Dozens of volunteers and paid staff have spent a lot of time working on this piece of zoning, debating it, discussing it, bringing it through the process. Redoing that all again in the fall is just a huge waste of the town's resources. And if, if people don't like the way the state is approaching this, I think they're very much free to contact their representatives, their senators, and use their own time to fight the state on it. But I just don't think that our bylaws, our funding in Walpole should be some kind of a political football. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higginen. Ms. O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim O'Neil, Precinct Eight, and I'm a member of the Select Board as well. I'm opposed to the substitute motion, and my rationale is that I would really like to hear the full debate on this article tonight, because, and a vote up or down on it, because if it gets voted down, I would like to understand why it would get voted down, so that we could be prepared to make adjustments to it, to bring it back in the fall and still meet the deadline. And so, as you have rightfully suggested, you've limited our conversation, you've allowed for some wiggle room, and I appreciate that, but you've limited the conversation to the substitute motion, and that's proper. There are many, many more arguments that need to be made here tonight. I'm in favor of it, and I could list off ten or twelve things that I'd like to talk about right now, but I won't. And so I think we need to defeat the substitute motion and then debate vigorously the main motion. Vote it up or down, and let us hear the, the debate, so that if it's a down vote, we can fix it for the fall. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. You got to speak, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Carroll, you just got to face, just leave the microphone alone, but just talk towards it. They'll adjust it in the box.
The map that they're giving here, I like to see. What, what does it mean with the red and the blue and...
Mr. Duchene?
So the, the proposed district has two sub-districts. There's an outer core district and a central core district. The outer core has less, has a less density. The central core has a higher density component, and so the thought behind that really was to provide more or less bookends to the district, to provide, like a transitional zone, where you wouldn't just have high, high density, you would have lower density on the outskirts of the district.
What do you mean by low density? I don't understand that. Explain. More or less housing?
Yes, so less. So density within our zoning is dictated by dwelling units per acre, so it allows us to kind of quantify what a build-out of a property or a project would be.
Okay. So I guess the question is, so let's say that it passes, so...
You're talking, excuse me, Mr. Carroll, you're talking about the substitute motion now, right? I just want to be clear.
No, no, not the substitute motion, the main motion.
Okay, but hold on, we're not debating the main motion right now? We're debating the substitute motion?
I'm done.
So, okay, thank you. Mr. Lee?
John Lee, Precinct Six, also on the zoning board, but not speaking in that position. I'm in favor of the substitute motion. Ed Forsberg asked me about this, and I'm actually the second on this. And I was at the hearings at the senior center, the two hearings that we had about this, and I'll come out right now and say, it's not a bad proposal. In fact, you know, if we weren't going to, if we didn't have the substitute motion, I'd be voting in favor of this. But Ed called me and said, why not wait until the fall? And I think that makes sense. There's no other zoning that we've received like this, where it's coming from the state mandating something like this. And although we've gone through it, I've been at the hearings, it's not bad, and I think we can have some comfort in that. But what's the, why not put, put it off until the fall and see how this shakes out with other communities? And so that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Wayland-Brattis?
Laura Wayland-Brattis, Precinct Two. I'd like to move the question, please.
Thank you, Mr. Trudell. So it's not that simple. So to move the question requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of moving the question, please raise your cards and say aye. All those opposed, please raise your red cards and say no, or nay. It's unanimous. The question has been moved. We will now vote on the substitute motion to refer back to the Select Board. That is all we're voting on at this time, nothing more, just that the substitute motion becomes the main motion. Mr. Trudell, do you have a point of order, or are you just waving to somebody? That's what I just said. Thank you, Mr. Trudell. Okay, so did, so just to be clarified again, one more time, we're voting right now only to make the substitute motion the main motion. And then we'll talk about the main motion, if it is it or if it's not. Clear? Okay. All those in favor of making the substitute motion to refer back to the Select Board, the main motion, raise your red card, your, your green card and say aye. All those opposed, raise your red card and say no. The motion has failed. We will now go to the main motion, which is the original motion, and we will open debate on that. Anyone? Mr. Hausenjager?
I just would...
Hold on, Mr. Hausenjager, please. You're not an RTM member.
I'm an elected official.
You are the Sewer and Water Commission, so unless it is very specific to that, you'll have to please take your seat, Mr. Hausenjager.
I'm actually the elected state representative for this congressional district. I, I represent Walpole.
Mr. Hausenjager, you are not an RTM member, and I do not see that the Sewer and Water Commission has a distinct thing on this. Please take your seat.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hausenjager.
Hi, Jane Bergen, Precinct Three. I'm reading this statement from Philip Chaharowski, who could not be here due to a long-planned family event. He wanted to let you know he's in favor of Article thirteen and urges members to vote yes. As a member of the planning board, I was one of two members voting in favor of it. I am also a member of the MBTA Zoning Steering Committee, representing the planning board, which worked on the bylaw. This bylaw balances complying with the MBTA Communities Act with what would work best for Walpole. It creates an overlay district that primarily falls in the Central Business District and near the MBTA commuter rail station, where we would want denser housing. There is not a lot of difference between what is currently allowed in the Central Business District and the new overlay district, mainly that the overlay district allows residential units on the ground floor and different height specifications. Having two sub-districts with differing dimensional requirements makes for a gradual transition in the allowed building heights between the new district and residential districts. Patrick Duchene, the consultant, and the committee worked hard to draw boundaries that would preserve the current neighborhoods. The bylaw changes, excuse me, changes what is allowed by right, but it doesn't mean that new housing will get built, as new projects will depend on developers and owners on what and if and when they will decide to build. Massachusetts Legislature passed the MBTA Communities Act because our state has a critical housing shortage, which has resulted in skyrocketing housing and rental prices. Massachusetts is only building half the houses we need each year. According to Rachel Heller, Director of the Citizens Housing and Planning Association and other housing experts, Massachusetts needs to build 200,000 new homes by the end of this decade to stabilize housing prices and rents. According to the Warren Group, the medium, medium, medium home price in greater Boston increased by 10% in just the last year, 625,000 to 690,000. In the housing analysis in the draft of the new Walpole master plan, almost half of Walpole renters across income levels are housing cost burdened, which means they are spending more than 30% of their total income on housing. We are pricing teachers, middle-class workers, young people, people on fixed incomes, and our own children out of our community. Passing this bylaw is one step that Walpole can take to help address the housing crisis. Walpole needs to follow the MBTA law, just as 44 other towns have done since May 2nd. It's a reasonable location for the MBTA district. I urge members to vote yes. Lastly, I want to acknowledge Patrick DeShane for his leadership to move this article along. Thank you. Philip Chaharowski?
Thank you, Ms. Bergen. Mr. Gallivan?
Mark Gallivan, Precinct Eight and Select Board. I stand in favor of this article. I think it's a very, very well-written article. I think Patrick and the committee did a great job. Here's how I'm thinking about this. It's ready to be passed. We should pass it. If by chance Milton's long-shot lawsuit wins, then that would affect us, and this would no longer apply, I believe. I could be thinking about it all wrong, but it seems like if their lawsuit wins and they invalidate the law, then it wouldn't affect us.
Town Council?
Mr. Moderator, through you. Either that or the town could act to rescind its adoption of the zoning bylaw in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gallivan. Ms. McNamara?
Lucy McNamara, Precinct Six. I reassert that the law is, or that the work of the group was excellent, and you came up with a great zone, but there's a weakness to this bylaw which allows the underlying zoning to be chosen by the developer. The reason I have a problem with that is that 95 West Street, which doesn't have units on the first floor, it's considered to be retail space, that retail space is completely empty. And it's almost like the developer gets a pass to have a denser or more units in an acre than if they had the MBTA zoning, which would allow units to be built on the first floor, and you wouldn't have as many units in an acre. Right now, around the corner from me, they're proposing 95 units of apartments in a 1.87-acre lot. But if we use the MBTA zoning, it would only be 56 units, and it would only be four stories high, and we wouldn't have retail, hopefully retail space on the first floor. So, maybe the way to approach this for me would be to vote for the zoning and then work to tighten up the zoning after it's approved, because I think the town would benefit from the MBTA zoning being the primary zoning for that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara. Mr. Hamilton?
Ms., Ms., Mr., Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Hausenjäger, please sit down, and I'll tell you why. Put the microphone back. I, I, I will tell you why, okay? So, but hold on one moment, okay? I'm just going to explain why to the benefit of everybody else, why I'm saying no to Mr. Hausenjäger at this time, okay? Our, our, our meeting, town meeting rules stipulate, the primary spokesperson is number one. Number two is the Finance Committee spokesperson. Number three are town officials, town committee members that have relevance to the motion. And number four is RTM members. When the RTM members are done, Mr. Hausenjäger may speak, assuming somebody doesn't move the question first, okay? So that's the way it goes. That's the way it's gone all the time. And Mr. Hausenjäger, I'm now going to ask you to move to the side, off, out of the middle, please, which I was going to do before. But if you're going to do this, I'm just going to move you out like all the other committee members are, and the town meeting reps are in the back, they're over here on the side. So please move to the side and not in the middle. And in the future, just ask you to basically adhere to that as well, too. Mr. Hamilton, please continue. Mr. Hamilton, come on over here. Hold on one sec. Guys, you got the microphone in the back there? Are we, are we working? Okay, keep talking, Mr. Hamilton.
Hausenjäger made a good point in talking to me. We do zoning articles in the fall. This is a zoning article. We should do it in the fall. And this looks like blackmail. The state is telling us what to do, and I don't really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Hausenjäger.
Sir.
Sean McCauley, Precinct Two. Question, Mr. Moderator. The MBTA community overlay district, I just wanted to make sure I got it correct. It confines all of this new zoning to this district, correct? And that's for the entire town?
Yes.
I would like to point out to members that may not realize that there are multiple commuter rail stations in Walpole or within half a mile of Walpole. Windsor Gardens is within half a mile of Mylodge Street. The Foxborough Station is within half a mile of Winter Street. And if I'm, I, I could be mistaken. If we vote positive to this overlay district, it will confine all of this zoning to this area of town. If we do not, it could potentially open up an overlay district in a number of different areas in town within a half a mile of commuter rail? Clarification?
Mr. DeShane, or, I was going to go to Mr. DeShane, if you don't mind.
So, the, the current district is being proposed within proximity of Walpole Station, which you're referencing is, I guess, in effect, Plimptonville and then Windsor Gardens. So, not to go overly detailed, but essentially those locations, while they are commuter rail stations in effect, that acreage is eligible as a developable station area. It does not mean towns need to put zoning within all those locations. They get to choose that location that works best for them.
So if I understand this correctly, if we approve this, everything will be in this area for sure?
Yes.
If we do not, there is a potential, doesn't mean it's going to happen, but there is a potential of Plimptonville having something developed in that area down the road, whereas right now, everything is contained within this overlay district downtown?
I, I would say very unlikely. So, but the process went through the steering committee, went through myself, went through the Select Board. So, a change like that would be starting over, essentially.
I guess my bigger question is, we're confident that this would pass the state's requirements?
Yes.
And keep everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Ms. Geodis?
Jen Geosit, Precinct One. Move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Trudell. This requires a two-thirds vote, as I said previously. Wait for everybody to take their seats. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your green card and say aye. All those opposed, please raise your red cards and say nay. I declare a two-thirds vote. The question has been moved. We will now, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your red, green cards, sorry. Opposed, raise your red cards and say nay. I declare a majority vote. And that is it, folks. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Lawson, seconded? No? Dissolve, excuse me. Motion to dissolve. Ms. Lawson, Ms. Burke, second. All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you. Motion to adjourn has been approved.